Please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Borough of Sayerville's Planning Board May, or June 4th, 2004 meeting. Beth, has this meeting been advertised in accordance with the Public Meeting Act?
Yes, Chairman, it has.
I have a roll call, please.
Mr. Candel, Ms. Larmine, Mr. Mueller, Mr. Shaw, Ms. Sitaka, Mr. Velosen, Mr. Williams, Councilman Zabrowski, Chairman Tai, we have a quorum.
We have any memorializations of resolutions?
None this evening.
Communication agenda?
None this evening.
Site plans. Mr. Sax, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. And thank you for permitting me to do a summation, as we agreed at the last meeting. First of all, I want to thank the board for their patience in this endeavor. We actually started 14 months ago, back in April of 2024. We've had a number of meetings, too many to count. So I want to thank all the board members for really spending their time on this application. I also want to thank all the board professionals for their valuable input to getting to this point this evening. And I also want to thank the public, either for, either if they were for or against this project. The comments made were legitimate comments and they were taken into consideration in the revisions to the plans and in some of the conditions that we're going to agree to if the board acts favorably on this application. And I'll be brief, Mr. Chairman, as I said. We're at a different point this evening than we were when we started back in April of 2024. First of all, we have made some significant changes to the building and also some significant operations agreements with respect to this property. First of all, we reduced the square footage of the building at one of the earlier meetings, and you have those revised plans, and those are the plans that we're asking you to approve this evening. Secondly, we also agreed to a reduction in the maximum occupancy of this building. As the board will recall, at the outset, with the initial plans, the requested occupancy was 454. We reduced that by almost a third, down to 321 occupants. We, I believe we've addressed a lot of these traffic, and really all of the traffic and parking issues, with some important conditions, again, if the board does approve this. First of all, we have agreed to have police presence on Friday afternoon services at Ramadan and as needed, if determined by the police department. We've agreed to have two services on Friday to reduce the parking issue that may arise with Friday afternoon services. We've agreed to block off the parking lot when the lot is full. We've agreed to install crosswalks, if necessary, at Washington and Ernston Road. All of that, of course, subject to Middlesex County approval. We have an overflow parking area, although we believe we won't need it, it is available if we need it. We also agreed to email blasts to advise congregants of issues with respect to attendance on Friday afternoon. We've agreed to parking monitors, and we've also agreed to shuttle bus if necessary. I think the important thing about parking on this site is that we anticipate that the same people are going to be attending every Friday, and the same people are going to come to the first service, and the same people are going to come to the second service. That's just human nature. It's not a large congregation, and we'll be able to control that. We've also agreed, very significantly, to a limitation on activities. And what I mean by that is that when the ritual activities are occurring on Friday afternoon, there'll be no other activities going on in that building. So that will ensure that no more than 321 occupants will be in that structure. We've also agreed, we discussed it, I think, maybe at the meeting before last, the, an operations plan, an operations manual, which will be incorporated into any resolution if the board acts favorably, and we will abide by that. You know, we took quite a bit of time to prepare that, and we certainly have no problem with complying with that. We've also agreed that the Eid activities, which are the two big holy days, will occur off-site, as they presently do now at the school. There'll be no wedding receptions. And we've agreed to come back to this, we've agreed to come back to the municipality within one year after opening with a new traffic study. And if there are concerns raised by the professionals or by the police department, we're going to address them. But again, we're confident that that's not going to be a problem. We've also, will agree to abide by all of the technical comments that were in the reports from Mr. Cornell, from Mr. Fischinger, from Mr. Vandenkoyt. Those were all good comments, and I think they will ensure that this site will operate in a proper fashion. I just want to talk about some of the variances that we are seeking. One of them is a parking variance, and we had discussion at the last meeting as to whether or not we need a parking variance. Based upon a strict interpretation of your ordinance, yes, we do. Because your ordinance doesn't distinguish between a limitation and activities. It takes all of the rooms into account, and it takes all of the activities that occur. And if that's the case, you come up with a number of 250. However, that variance is really abated by the fact that we have agreed to that strict limitation of no activity on Fridays when ritual activities are occurring, which is our largest activity and our most well-attended. And we've agreed, 321 is the occupancy. If you take your ordinance, a strict reading of your ordinance, it's three occupants or three persons per vehicle, which is based on seats, but I think we can equate the fact that we don't have seats here. We have prayer mats, and that would come up with 107 parking spaces, which is what we comply with. We are providing 107 parking spaces, and based on the limitation of 321, we are, in my opinion at least, although it's a technical variance, I believe we are meeting the spirit and intent and abating any issues with that variance. There are some other variances which Mr. McDonough testified to. Those are a monument sign in the side yard setback, an accessory structure to principal building setback, a pitched roof, and off-street parking and loading area in the front yard area. As Mr. McDonough testified in his testimony, those can all be satisfied under the flexible C2 criteria, where they are really de minimis variances. They are commonly associated with any house of worship. You do have parking in many houses of worship in the front yard. The pitched roof is based on the religious design of the structure. And the monument sign, obviously, we need a monument sign for identification, and that's why it's located where it is. We also need some design waivers. The design waivers are for a loading space. Again, there was testimony from the applicant and from other applicants' professionals that there really is no need for any loading here that will occur. You know, this is a house of worship. Any deliveries are usually by box truck, if in fact, or van or passenger vehicle. So loading space in a strict technical sense would not be necessary. It's not a shopping center, so I think that can be granted without difficulty. There's a design waiver for a 200-foot deceleration lane, that's strictly up to Middlesex County. There are the design waiver requests for a 2% slope. I believe we also had testimony from Mr. Khan, our engineer, that there are no drainage issues, and there are drainage comments in Mr. Cornell's report, and we're going to address all those if in fact this application is approved. Finally, there were three additional design waivers in the parking lot. One of them is for, again, onsite parking in the front yard, sidewalks in the parking area, and the head-to-head parking that we have. And again, Mr. Stimmel addressed all of those design waivers. In his professional opinion, they can be granted based on sound engineering. And again, these are commonly associated with the house of worship. Now, this is a conditional use, and the reason we're in front of this board is because we meet all the criteria of the conditional use ordinance that you have. There were about eight or nine criteria. We satisfy all of them. Mr. McDonough testified at length as to that. All right, now, let's just talk about the use that's being proposed here. This is going to be a house of worship. Obviously, under New Jersey law, it's an inherently beneficial use. I think we can all recognize that. And the reason why it's recognized as an inherently beneficial use is the state legislature, after 1947, when they adopted the New Jersey Constitution, and several years thereafter, when they adopted the municipal land use law, they recognized why religion and why faith is very important. And they specifically, in the municipal land use law, have categorized a house of worship as an inherently beneficial use. You don't need to satisfy the goals of planning, you don't need to satisfy the positive criteria. What we also know, and I think we can almost take judicial notice of it, is that just about in every, you know, I can't even think of a municipality in the state of New Jersey that doesn't encourage these uses in residential areas. And why is that? Well, I think the reason is, is that we want to encourage neighborhoods to have houses of worship. You drive anywhere in the state of New Jersey, you will find houses of worship all throughout residential neighborhoods. We don't see them necessarily on Route 9, we don't see them on Route 18, unnecessarily on Route 1. They're all on local streets. And the reason is, is that, again, we want to encourage residents to be able to walk to their facility, but they are an important, an important portion of life in any residential neighborhood. And it doesn't matter what the denomination is. It could be a Christian faith, a Hindu faith, Jewish faith, Muslim faith. And that's why we encourage them in residential neighborhoods, and that's why your governing body at some past date, and back in the many, many decades ago, determined that you want these in residential neighborhoods, albeit as conditional uses. I think we can also recognize the fact, and I think the board recognizes this fact, that the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution specifically talks about freedom of assembly, freedom of speech, freedom of religion. And the New Jersey Constitution, with the adoption of the municipal land use law and the adoption of the New Jersey Constitution, recognizes the same concerns. We also can recognize the fact that houses of worship are treated differently. They're treated specially under federal law, and there's a reason for that. And the reason is, again, circling back to First Amendment rights and constitutional rights, there's a reason why we want to have and encourage houses of worship. We have several ancillary uses associated with this house of worship. And I don't think they're any different than the ancillary uses that we see at the church right up the street, or the synagogue down the street. And those would be classrooms, those would be a gymnasium, those would be ritual rooms. We see that in every house of worship. Just a few other comments, Mr. Chairman. I'm almost completed. There was some comment from the public about Ernston Road, about Ernston Road being one of the five worst highways in Middlesex County. Again, that's, you know, I'm not sure if that's fact, all right? But we know that Ernston Road has been a congested road for a long time. And that's why our traffic engineer specifically studied and did a number of traffic counts and a number of traffic studies. And this house of worship will have minimal impact on Ernston Road. There will be police activity there when the use is being utilized. And that will actually work to really tame the traffic conditions that are there. Yeah, you may have to wait a little bit longer, all right? But we expect the parking lot to clear out quite quickly. With the two services, we don't see an issue. And I think this board can recognize the fact that the current condition of Ernston Road would never be a reason to turn down this application. You know, there's been other public comments that, well, you know, it's a small lot, you know, it's too intense. Again, we meet all of the conditional use criteria, but interestingly, the variances that we don't need are lot coverage, impervious coverage, and a floor-area ratio. Those are the ones, as a land use attorney, those are the ones we look at to determine if a use is too intensive. We don't need variance relief for that. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I know that this board does the right thing, because I've sat as the attorney for this board in the past. There have been other controversial applications involving houses of worship, but I know that this board, in those instances, has done the proper and the correct thing based upon the municipal land use law and based upon testimony that you hear and you've heard in this particular application. I think the good thing about, the great thing about Sayerville is it's a welcoming community. It's a diverse community. You have many different houses of worship here. And I do believe that if this board does grant this application, that this house of worship and this mosque will be an asset to this community and will thrive. And I thank you again for permitting me to sum up. I also thank you for indulging with me for the last 14 months, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, board, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Members of the board, members of the public, I would like to take this time just to review the status of the law and remind some people, and also have the opportunity to speak to the public and educate them, that in the state of New Jersey, pursuant to the municipal land use law, houses of worship are considered inherently beneficial uses. If a use is inherently beneficial, that means the positive criteria are deemed to be satisfied. And what does that mean? Well, when land use boards sit and evaluate applications, they're charged with evaluating whether the positive criteria are met and whether the, with respect to what we call the negative criteria, which are another technical criteria and definitions, whether, we've demonstrated that they are not, those negative criteria don't outweigh the positive criteria. And so, when a use is inherently beneficial, which a house of worship in the state of New Jersey is inherently beneficial, the positive criteria are deemed to be satisfied. And the applicant, in this case, does not need to prove the existence of special or what we call special reasons or exceptional reasons under the statute to gain approval. However, the applicant is still required to demonstrate compliance with the negative criteria portion. That being said, our Supreme Court has told us that when it comes to inherently beneficial uses, there are really four criteria that a land use board should consider when evaluating compliance or existence of the negative criteria for inherently beneficial use. The first is, we evaluate whether the public interest is served by the inherently beneficial use. And the law tells us that different uses have different levels of benefit. Having, you know, read the Constitution of the state of New Jersey and the Constitution of the United States of America, a house of worship is a significantly inherently beneficial use, right? It weighs high on the list of those uses. We also are, the second criteria a board is charged with considering is to identify any adverse consequences of granting the variance, right? When we say the applicant has identified certain variances they're seeking, what's the adverse impact of those variances? And one thing that's important to remember is that we only consider what we're allowed to consider. Our Supreme Court has told us for many, many years that a land use board cannot consider off-site traffic impact when evaluating these types of applications. Long-held case law, which is very clear that despite their, and I know that Mr. Sax talked about the traffic issues on Ernston Road, but you know, frankly, that's not really an issue for this application. Because the off-site traffic impact is not something that we're really concerned with. Not that it's not important, not that it doesn't affect overall traffic within the municipality, but what our Supreme Court has told us as far as what we can consider as a land use board, that is not something that we should consider. The third criteria, we have to consider the conditions that might be imposed to mitigate any of those adverse consequences. And, you know, there are a number of conditions that have been discussed and which will be placed on the record this evening, and those conditions have to be considered and assumed that those conditions will be complied with and followed through. And finally, we balance the public interest in granting the variance versus not granting the variance, right? And what you're charged with, what this board's charged with determining is if that variance is granted, would there be a substantial detriment to the public good? And if there will be a substantial detriment, then that would be the basis for a denial of a variance. You know, it's a very concise, four-pronged test that we're charged with evaluating. You know, I know Mr. Sax said that this is a controversial matter. I know that it certainly involved a lot of members of the public, but I don't know that it's been controversial. I think it's been pretty standard that people are concerned about traffic, they're concerned about overall impact and where they live. You know, I've certainly been a part of a lot of controversial matters, and while there's been a lot of public interest, I don't know that I would necessarily call this controversial. So in evaluating this application, it's important that the public understand that these, those four criteria I just discussed are what the board is charged with evaluating, and that's the scope and the extent of their evaluation. Will the public interest be served? Are there any adverse consequences of granting the variance? Are there conditions that may mitigate those adverse consequences? And when we balance, when we do a totality of the circumstances and we balance everything together, will there be a substantial detriment to the public good? And that, that's the question that's before the board, not just on this application, but on any application that presents with a matter that's considered inherently beneficial. So I hope that, I try to say that to make everybody aware of what this board is charged with and what the standard is before the matter is heard. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your service. All right, board, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application with all
and variances.
And there.
Madam Secretary, could you please read into the record the conditions that the board has raised over? And we can represent that these conditions were published, were made available to the applicant, have been reviewed, and were available to the public before this evening. So if you could please read those conditions into the record at this time, that would be appropriate.
I don't think you're on. That's why. There's a small misprint on 25D. The second half of that should actually be a 25E. You'll see where it.
Professionals and police. Professionals and police.
Yeah, so, oh, sorry, sorry. You're starting with, starting with submit. It should be E.
Okay, I see. Yes?
We're good?
Yep. Mr. Pullman, should I start with the variances first?
Yeah, please identify for the record the variances that are being sought for this application.
There are currently five variances are required for this project. Number one, as a total of 250 parking spaces are required for the proposed project, 107 are provided. Number two, monument signs must be set back a minimum of a half of the front yard setback, which would be a minimum of 25 feet as a setback for signage, and the proposed signage is a setback of 12.5 feet. Number three, as the ordinance section 26-82.6.3 states, accessory structures in all zones, districts shall be at least 10 feet from any other structure on the same lot, excluding patios, and the proposed minaret is 7.14 feet from the proposed principal building. Number four, as the ordinance section 26-96.1.E states that all roofs are on one- and two-story principal buildings and residential districts shall be pitched, and the flat roofs should not be permitted, and since portions of the proposed building features a flat roof. Number five, as the ordinance section 26-98.1.B.8 states that no off-street parking or loading area should be located in a minimum of required front yard setback area, and since parking spaces are proposed within the minimum required front yard setback area, and all other design waivers as mentioned. Conditions of approval: one, no call to prayer will be announced outside the building. Two, no occupancy would be permitted in the minaret. Three, basketball courts and multipurpose rooms will not be utilized for religious services. Four, a licensed professional engineer will perform pre-development inspections of all foundations of existing houses adjacent to the property. Five, the building will not be open for 24 hours. Six, the Friday afternoon prayer service will be split into two sessions. Seven, police officers will be hired to assist with traffic control during the Friday afternoon services. Eight, visitors to the mosque will not be permitted to park on the adjacent residential streets. Nine, no other activities will be permitted in the building during Friday afternoon services. Ten, the parking lot will be closed when full occupancy is reached. Eleven, the submitted operations manual will be required to be complied with. Twelve, provide copy of executed lease of 22 off-side parking spaces on Johnson's Lane. Thirteen, garbage pickup will be performed during off-peak hours. Fourteen, the maximum occupancy of the building at any time will be 321. Fifteen, police officers will be hired and assist with traffic control during special events and Ramadan. Sixteen, two dedicated monitors will be provided to enforce onsite traffic control. Seventeen, applicant will contact Borough Historical Society and ask if they are interested in contents of the existing house located at 214 Ernston Road. If any, if interested, the applicant will allow Historical Society to remove any requested items. Eighteen, the applicant will contact Middlesex County and request their approval for the installation of crosswalks on Ernston Road. The applicant will also install crosswalks and handicap ramps at all locations approved by Middlesex County. Nineteen, applicant will comply with the conditions set forth in the following reports. Reports prepared by CME Associates dated February 21st, 2024, October 16th, 2024, and April 16th, 2025. Reports prepared by Bright View Engineering dated April 9th, 2024, October 11th, 2024, and April 11th, 2025. Twenty-two, reports prepared by Acuity Consulting Services and dated April 7th, 2025. Number twenty-three, report prepared by Michael P. Fowler Associates LLC and dated February 16th, 2024. Number twenty-four, the applicant shall coordinate traffic control issues with the police department in advance of events and shall, A, employ off-duty police officers for events as determined by the police department; B, distribute flyers and email blasts to the congregant advising of additional off-site parking locations and to abide traffic officers and parking regulations; C, install signage for events at least one week in advance at locations determined by the police department; D, use off-site parking and busing to and from off-site locations in coordination with the applicant in conjunction with the board engineer and shall conduct traffic studies. Number twenty-five, the applicant in conjunction with the board engineer shall conduct traffic studies during the first full year of operation of the new mosque, which studies shall include: A, traffic counts during normal weekday activities and services; B, traffic counts during Friday afternoon prayer services; C, traffic counts during weekend activities, including a wedding; D, traffic counts during Ramadan; E, submit a traffic report after the first year of operations to the board professionals. If the report shows an increase in traffic above five percent of the levels testified by the applicant. Its traffic engineer and contain in the traffic impact study. The applicant shall meet with the board professionals and the police department to determine if additional measures. Should be employed to alleviate the impact of the additional traffic, including obtaining additional off-site locations and the use of shuttle bussings. Number twenty-six, the applicant shall provide a report that, based on the lighting plan. There will be no off-site lighting spillage per the borough ordinance. And finally, number twenty-seven, applicant shall hold the Eid holiday off-site. So we have a motion and a second.
In addition, this motion would include the design waiver as well, which I don't believe need to be read, read into the record at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Pullman. Mr. Muller.
I vote no, and I'd like to place my reasons on the record for voting no. First, the applicant is seeking. A C two variants, five of them. So I wanted to give the board the benefit of my analysis. First, the standards I employed in reaching my decision to vote no. I relied upon the New Jersey Zoning and Land Use and Administration. GAN Treatise, which I believe has been recognized as the foremost authority on New Jersey zoning and land use law. I'm referring to section twenty-nine dash three. Of the GAN publication, which specifically deals with C two variances. And GAN notes that. Undue hardship is not a requirement for the grant of a variance under C two. What must be shown in that, what must be shown is that the application, one, relates to a specific piece of property. Two, that the purpose, purposes of the municipal land use law. Would be advanced by deviation from the zoning ordinance requirements. Three, that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. Four, that the benefits of the deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment. And five, that the variance will not substantially impair the intent. And purpose of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. And GAN cites to Jacoby versus Englewood Cliffs Zoning Board of Adjustment. Four forty-two, NJ Super four fifty, page four seventy-one, Aptiv, two thousand and fifteen. Moving on in the GAN section on C two variances. GAN points out that inherently beneficial use doctrine does not apply to requests for relief pursuant to subsection C. Of NJ S forty colon fifty-five D dash seventy. GAN states generally C variances are sought only where the principal use of the property is permitted. Hence, the present or proposed use is immaterial except where the use exacerbates or lessens the proposed non-conformity. GAN goes on to give an example, if a hospital applies for a variance from a fifty-foot setback requirement. To construct a multi-level car park only five feet from its property line. Adjacent to a residential area, the fact that a hospital is an inherently beneficial use should not affect the applicant's obligation. To show either a hardship under a C one variance or the elements required under C two, as discussed above. Since the purpose of yard setbacks is to protect adjoining properties from intrusions of sound, light, glare, and other objectional factors. The grant of both variances, whether under C one or C two, should be carefully considered independent. Of whether the proposed principal or accessory use of the property is inherently beneficial or not. In Kaufman versus Planning Board for Warren Township, one-ten NJ five fifty-one, nineteen eighty-eight. Our Supreme Court first considered the C two variance. And the court noted at page one six, page five sixty-three. Speaking to the general concept of the C two variance. That, quote, "By definition, then, no C two variance should be granted. When merely the purposes of the owner will be advanced." The grant of approval must actually benefit the community in that it represents a better zoning alternative for the property. The focus of a C two case, then, will be not on the characteristics of the land that, in light of current zoning requirements. Create a quote-unquote hardship on the owner, warranting a relaxation of standards. But on the characteristics of the land that present an opportunity. For improved zoning and planning that will benefit the community. Note that it is the applicant's responsibility to provide the evidence by which the board may make its determination. That's Trinity Baptist versus Louis Scott Hold, two nineteen, NJ Super four ninety, five hundred, Aptiv, nineteen eighty-seven. As in all variance cases, the applicant bears the burden of proving both the positive and the negative criteria. That's ten-story dom property versus Morrow, two sixteen, NJ sixteen, thirty, two thirteen. Now, the GAN Treatise goes on to discuss. Several instances in which courts have applied the Supreme Court's. Standard in Kaufman to uphold the grant of a C two variance. To allow fewer parking spaces than required under an ordinance. One of the cases GAN cites to is Commercial Realty versus First Atlantic, which is two thirty-five, NJ Super five seventy-seven. Aptiv, nineteen eighty-nine, affirmed by the New Jersey Supreme Court, one twenty-two, NJ five forty-six, nineteen ninety-one. In that case. The court found that the variance for a decrease in parking spaces was a proper exercise of the board's discretion. Where the number of spaces was adequate for the proposed motel. And the approval of trees and shrubs in lieu of parking spaces, quote. Promoted a desirable environment and prevented urban sprawl. And in that case, it was a motel that was seeking approval. The ordinance required, I believe, a hundred and sixty-six parking spaces. The applicant was seeking a variance to put in a hundred and forty-four. And the applicant came in with evidence. That from similar hotels and motels that had operated, that it only required. Point eight parking spaces per room. So if it was a hundred and thirty-three room motel. It was, they would actually need less than a hundred and thirty-three parking spaces. They were providing a hundred and forty-four. So even though the, the ordinance required a hundred and sixty-six. There was ample evidence in the record that the hundred and forty-four proposed was more than adequate to meet their proposed use. Another case that the GAN Treatise cites is Jacoby versus Englewood Cliffs Zoning Board of Adjustment. Four forty-two, NJ Super four fifty, Aptiv, two thousand and fifteen. Similarly, holding that a C two variance for a reduction in parking spaces was appropriate. In that case, there was testimony that this was an office. An office project, that the employees would either be using mass transit from New York City to commute to the, the office. Or there'd be virtual, uh, people, uh, working remotely and virtually. So there was a, a, there was a demonstrated showing that. The reduction in parking was more than adequate to meet the, the requested use. GAN also reminds that the board must always bear in mind that it cannot presume that the status quo of a proposed use of a particular building. Will continue indefinitely. So those are the standards that I employed in reaching my determination. Now, in terms of the facts. With respect to the prayer hall, the, the prayer hall will consist of three hundred and twenty-one mats. So our ordinance requires one parking space for every three seats. So under the ordinance, the prayer hall alone would require a hundred and seven onsite parking spaces. That's the maximum number of spaces being offered by the applicant. The remainder of the proposed building requires another hundred and forty-three parking spaces. There's no parking proposed for the, the rest of the use of the building. Now, with respect to the prayer hall aspect. The applicant's traffic impact analysis prepared by Mr. Stimel. Demonstrates a more intensive need for the applicant than the one-to-three parking space ratio required under our ordinance. The February nineteen, twenty-twenty-five report of Mr. Stimel indicates the following. Traffic counts were initially performed at the fire company on Friday, May seventeen, twenty-twenty-four. From twelve PM until four PM. Results of these counts showed a total of two hundred and seventy persons entering the site. In one hundred and ninety-five vehicles over the four-hour period. Which equated to a vehicle occupancy rate of one point three eight persons per vehicle. Updated traffic counts were performed at the fire company on Friday, January seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five. From twelve PM until four PM. The results of the updated count showed a total of two hundred and sixty-three persons entering the site. In one, one hundred and fifty-nine vehicles over the four-hour period. This equates to a vehicle occupancy rate of one point six five persons per vehicle. Mr. Stimel also analyzed the parking ratio for nearby mosques. Specifically, traffic counts were conducted during Friday prayers. At a mosque in East Brunswick and one in Somerset, these counts showed average vehicle occupancies. Of one point eight two persons per vehicle and one point eight eight persons per vehicle respectively. So based upon the applicant's existing prayer services and actual usage. The, the parking need is actually. Is actually one parking space per either one point three five or one point six five people. Now, to prove the positive and negative criteria for the variances being sought, the applicant presented the testimony of its planner. Uh, Mr. McDonough. And Mr. McDonough testified on October sixteen, twenty-twenty-four. This was before the most recent changes to the application were made. Mr. McDonough testified that he relied upon the testimony of the applicant's other professionals. Including Mr. Stimel, the applicant's traffic expert. And I found certain of Mr. McDonough's testimony to be particularly relevant. On page one oh one, when Mr. Fischinger, the, the board's traffic consultant questioned him. He says, quote, "John, just one question. You quoted the one per three-seat number for the parking ordinance. How do you reconcile that requirement with Mr. Stimel's earlier testimony? That the existing operation is one point thirty, one point three eight people per vehicle? As opposed to three people per vehicle as the ordinance requires? How do you justify those two from a planning perspective?" And Mr. McDonough testified, again, I will fall back on the testimony of Mr. Stimel. And how he dealt with the ratio requirement there. Again, the supply will meet the actual demand. On page. One seventeen, there was testimony or about. A hundred and twenty-one vehicles being parked at the Madison Park Fire Hall. We have a hundred and twenty-one vehicles that are generally there on every Friday. On page one twenty-four. I had asked Mr. McDonough. Mr. McDonough, let's assume it's correct and you need a variance for thirty parking spaces, and I'm not entirely convinced that's the case. It's your testimony that it's not going to create a substantial burden in the area, having thirty cars looking for parking on Ernston Road. Mr. McDonough says, "That is my emphatic testimony, yes." And I asked him how many times has he been on Ernston Road? And he said, "Based on the underlying record that the supply will meet the actual demand." And I asked, "What's the underlying data for that?" And he said, "You have a sworn ex post un, under oath here." Who is? That's the predicate for my testimony. And I commented one data point on one day of a Friday where there's no testimony in the square footage. That's your whole case. And he said, "I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I am relying upon the testimony of the witnesses that have gone before me." At page one twenty-nine, Mr. McDonough was asked, quote, "Mr. McDonough, I don't want you to think that I'm being adversarial here because we have a major problem on Ernston Road. I wish you could all figure, everyone in this room could figure out a way to solve this problem. But the areas, I'll, I'll, I'll move forward. But when you said that the benefits outweigh the detriment. You know, for the variance, for thirty parking spots, did you analyze what the detriment would be on the area of thirty cars not being able to park? And what detriment, if any, that would cause in the area? Did, did you do that analysis to say that the benefits outweigh the detriment? Mr. McDonough states, "I'm not giving my testimony in a vacuum. There's been a number of witnesses that were before me. You have a signed and sealed traffic report. As far as I understand it, you have had on the board's side a check of that data. And how the methodology was done, and it has not been questioned. I'm sure if I'm not saying the right thing, I'll be corrected, but there are checkpoints here. I'm not giving testimony in a vacuum. But I'm certainly relying on at least three witnesses before me who said traffic, parking, and circulation will be okay." And then I, I asked him, and I understand that your answer, that you're not going to need the thirty spots in essence, right? Because we have the data point saying it's only going to be a hundred and twenty-one that we need, right? Because we know what happened at the firehouse. And he answered, "In accordance with acceptable traffic engineering principles." And I asked him, "The question is, what happens if we do need it? Because the law says we're going to need it. That's what the ordinance says." So the law presumes that you're going to need those spots, and if you need the thirty spots. Did you analyze what the detriment would be of not having those thirty spots? Because you've testified a bit conclusory manner that the benefit. Outweighs the detriments with respect to parking. So did you analyze what the detriment would be of not having? Of needing the thirty spots and not having them? And Mr. McDonough answered, "I did not." And then finally. Toward the end of his testimony. I, I said, "Mr. Chairman," this is on page one thirty-six, just going back to my comments before. I just would ask that Mr. Sacks bring Mr. McDonough back once we have a full. Plans and we know what the full parking requirements are, if there's any disputes regarding that. And the chairman said, "Mr. Sacks, do you have a problem with that?" And Mr. Sacks said, "I have no objection to that, Mr. Chairman." And then Mr. Fischinger had one more question. And he said, "Actually, I'm still, I know we've started to go over this, but I'm still confused, John, on which. In your professional opinion, what is the correct number of, to convert, to convert number of people? Congregants to petitioners, the number of needed parking spaces, because we have the ordinance that says three persons per vehicle. Your testimony of your own traffic engineer says it's one point three eight, which is correct. Because if you're assuming the ordinance number is correct, you have enough parking. But if you assume the testimony of your own traffic engineer of actual real-world conditions of this congregation. Then you don't have enough parking for four hundred and fifty-four people, which was the number at the time. How do you reconcile those two, which is the correct standard? And he answered, "I would have to go back and listen to Bill's testimony that the one point three eight in the context of what it was used in." Again, the one per three is what I typically see as a planning standard. And Mr. Fischinger said, "Well, I, it sounds like you're coming back, so it will give you time to confer with Mr. Stimel, I'm sure." Uh, Mr. McDonough did not come back. So in the two cases I cited earlier where a C two variance was granted, and these are two. Published New Jersey decisions that are referenced in the GAN Treatise. Those cases allow, allowed fewer parking spaces than required under the ordinance because there was sufficient. Evidence in both of those cases that the proposed fewer parking spaces. Were indeed adequate based upon the actual. Actual usage in the case of commercial realty and the anticipated need in the Jacoby case. Here, given the applicant's actual historic and current usage, the opposite appears to be true for me. And if you apply these ratios to. The three hundred and twenty-one. Occupancy limit, you're still gonna, if, if it's one point three five to one point six five, you're still gonna need. At least a hundred and sixty parking spots based upon the actual. Usage and the ratios that have been documented in the record. And. In addition, with respect to the parking in the front setback, I did not. Find there to be a sufficient showing in the positive and negative criteria for that particular variance. In addition, I did not find the suggestion of overflow parking on Johnson's Lane to be plausible. At some point, that commercial establishment will start operating again, and there will be a use of that lot and that parking lot. I did not find there be, to be any plausible evidence that the applicant had a credible and effective plan. To enforce any self-imposed occupancy restrictions which would mitigate any of the negative criteria. I did not find plausible that the. I did not find plausible that the uses at the proposed site would remain stagnant into the future. There was no apparent plan for the inevitable growth. There was not relevant, not particularly relevant to a C2, but more toward a C1, which I'm not sure if it's been agreed that it's C2 or C1. But there was no showing that there's any other potential sites were considered. There's no evidence that the hardships requiring the variances were beyond the applicant's control. I did not find sufficient evidence that in granting a variance for parking and all of these variances taken together, the purposes of the municipal land use law and the master plan would be furthered as opposed to being impaired. So based upon all the foregoing, I did not find that the applicant has met his burden, it has met its burden in establishing the positive and negative criteria for a C2 variance, and therefore, I am voting no on the application. Thank you.
Mr. Cantal?
I vote no, and I concur with the reasons given by Mr. Ball.
Ms. Larmen?
I vote no, and the reasons are for the variances and the waivers and also the conditions of approval. I just don't understand how that would be managed and enforced because there's a lot of them.
Mr. Shaw?
I vote no. After reviewing the applicant's site plan, I have two serious concerns regarding the compliance with several zoning ordinance. First, the plan fails to include a designated loading dock, which is required under L O N 2698-2 of our zoning code. Second, the proposed number of parking spaces appears insufficient, not only for the current occupancy, but certainly for any future growth. Our job as a board is not just to assess immediate compliance, but to anticipate and mitigate future impact. If just five additional congregants joined this facility, there would be no space to accommodate them. That raises real concerns about overflow parking, traffic circulation, and the safety of pedestrians and neighboring users. Taken together, these deficiencies, such as the site is not adequately planned for the intended use, nor is it resilient to predictable growth, I cannot support approval unless the applicant addresses both the parking capacity and the lack of loading area in a way that complies with Board of Court and protects public safety.
Ms. Sataka?
I vote no, along with my fellow members, but also, I was thinking like they were thinking. I'm not as elegant. But all those waivers, there's a lot of waivers, and the borough has a reason that we have variances and stuff. So I agree that the answer is no. I vote no.
Mr. Velosin?
I also vote no. I believe that if you build this big, beautiful building, you're going to bring on more people. You have only 107 spots. If you, all those 107 cars pull in at one time in, within 5, 10, 15, 20 minutes of your service, and you try to funnel down 64 cars into that garage, you're going to create confusion and congestion right on your own site.
Mr. Williams?
I vote no as well. I agree with everything Mr. Muller said. And in addition, pedestrian safety in that area is on the top of my list, that I disagree with having anything there.
Councilman Zabrowski?
Mr. Chairman, I vote no. I just want to give my reasoning. First, I concur with a very comprehensive review. I probably won't be as elegant as he was. But as a planning board member, I'm obligated to evaluate the application and to see that it's how it works in compatibility and compliance with the several zoning ordinance and our planning requirements. An instant, is this, excuse me, in this instance, the number and nature of the requested waivers and variances raise substantial concerns about whether the proposed development is appropriate for this site under the existing regulatory framework. It took some time, but both the borough and the applicants agreed, finally, that 250 parking spaces were required. Yet the applicant has only proposed 107, resulting in a shortfall of 143 spaces. To me, this is a significant deficiency which can't be overlooked. While the applicant's professionals' testimony suggested that the proposed parking might meet onsite needs, I don't believe it fulfills the standards established in our zoning framework. Adequate parking is essential to prevent spillover into neighboring areas and to avoid adverse consequences within the site as well as the adjoining neighborhoods. Beyond parking, the applicant seeks additional variances as well as other design waivers. While these might seem modest in isolation, they must be considered collectively. The law and sound planning practice both recognize that a cluster of minor deviations can lead to a significant departure from the zoning plan. When assessed together, these five variances, along with the multiple waivers, suggest that this project does not fit this site without compromising the borough's zoning and planning standards. To me, the applicant has not demonstrated the benefits of these, that the variances outweigh the detriments. Nor have they shown that the project will advance the purposes of zoning and planning requirements within the borough. In the end, they have not demonstrated that the site remains particularly suitable for the proposed use despite such substantial noncompliance. And before I end, I do want to thank the applicant for their time and effort. I also want to thank our professionals and staff for coordinating this 14-month-long process. And again, I vote no.
Chairman Tai?
I vote no. The variances in the parking are the conditions that I am most concerned with. I'd also like to thank the applicant, the public, my board, all the professionals. It's been a long couple of months, but that's what we have, so I vote no.
Thank you. Application denied. Next on the agenda is Old Business, New Business Administrative Matters. Our next meeting is June 18th. We currently have our Affordable Housing study and also an applicant on, from 2060 Route 35. Can we have a motion to open up the public, please?
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody like to speak? Hearing none? Oh, Jim, go ahead. If we could just, we've got a meeting going on. If we could just be quiet for a second. Mr. Robinson, give your name and address, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim Robinson, Burrell Square. Is that on? Light's on. I think it's on. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim Robinson, Burrell Square in Parlin. I too would like to thank everyone involved in this application, the board, professionals, the members of the public, the applicant, for all of the time, effort, energy, thought, researched, and well-reasoned recommendations that went into this. I sat where you are sitting now, Mr. Chairman, about 40, 40J would remember, 42, 43 years ago, when the Hindu temple was before us. So I know, I know what you are going through. I especially or went through, and I congratulate you for the way you handled this with professionalism and objectivity and appropriate reasons for your vote. Two things I'd like to say, I want to especially thank the board for taking the suggestion. Very early on, I and other members of the public recommended that we have the special religious use, land use attorney. I think that was helpful to this situation. And for the first time in 35 or 40 years, you had an independent traffic expert come and advise the board. I very much appreciate that you took that suggestion. Not too many of my suggestions are taken in town. So when you did that, I was grateful, and I think it helped this situation, and I helped, and I think it helped with your reasoning and your argument. I think we all knew this was never going to be easy. And it wasn't, but it was done well and done as well as it could have been done. I mentioned before, and I will mention again, previously, the ordinance required a religious use be situated on 3 acres. A few years ago, that was changed to allow religious facilities to be located on 1 acre. This application is about 2.49, little under 2 and 1/2 acres. So it qualified. If, and I don't know the reason, the mayor, the Mayor O'Brien and the planning board did that, had they not done that, this application would never have been even considered. I think that would have been more fair to the town and more fair to the applicant. If they had focused on 3 or 4 or 5-acre lots, more space farther away from neighbors, not in congested areas, I think there might have been a different outcome for them tonight. Because I engage with a lot of people on this, I truly believe the objections to this were based on very legitimate land use reasons. In my heart of hearts, I believe that. We all know, as the attorney so correctly pointed out, off-site traffic can't be a consideration. Parking is a consideration. Parking is a consideration. That's one of the reasons I had suggested bustling to help ameliorate the situation. That, that wasn't considered. But I would very strongly recommend that the planning board consider going back to a 3-acre minimum from the 1 acre that it is now, so that this facility, if it chooses to come back, or any other religious facility that wants to locate in the town, goes where there's more area, where it fits better, where it doesn't infringe or encroach on the neighbors, where there's less traffic, where there's less congestion. So, you know, I don't want to say that the board created this problem a few years ago. Maybe there were good reasons for doing that, I don't know. But had that not been done, I think this applicant would have looked at other property that was 3 or 4 or 5 acres, and I think that would have been in everybody's best interest. So again, thank you very much. I know what you went through. I know it's difficult. I appreciate, and I think that, I think everybody appreciates, including the applicant, appreciate, while they might not agree with your decision, I think they have to appreciate that you did the best you could under the circumstances, and your decision was based on well-reasoned law and good land use practices. So thank you, and thank you very much.
Anybody else want to speak? Fourth time.
My name is Betty Pennella. I live at Tim Parkway Place in Parlin. I want to thank the board for going through everything you did. I'm that smart. I just knew this was not the right place for this building and for this to happen. Maybe if they come back with something smaller or something, whatever, but thank you.
Anybody else like to speak?
Motion close.
Take motion close.
Motion second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Can I get a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.